I'd like to call the September 24th meeting of the Groton Board of Education Policy Committee, special meeting to order. The time now is 6:02 PM. Present are Board Member Ian Thomas and Bev Washington. Hi Bev, let's see you. Susan, Denise Dunittle, Dulittle, and our eminent communication team of Kate. So our first order of business is to review the minutes of the July and the August meeting. I suppose you guys have had a chance to read it. Would somebody like to move the motion? And then we can discuss it.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of July 23rd and hold tight. And yeah, July 23rd, that's all I have.
That's right. I'll draw the second. Well, I'll second it then. So the-
Sorry, I was a little slow with the trigger here. Yes, a second, Thomas.
Second, Thomas. Thank you very much. So is there any discussion on the minutes of July 23rd? Hearing a deafening silence, I will presume that we have no discussion. Would all those in favor of accepting the minutes as submitted, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So it is unanimous, three in favor, no abstention, no opposed. In terms of the August 27th meeting, I don't think we have any minutes to approve. I will just say that we had a lack of quorum, so no meeting was held. If somebody thinks we should do otherwise, please speak up and entertain your ideas. Okay, so we move on. For the purposes of speeding Denise to an early dinner, I promised her she'd be out before 11 o'clock. We're going to start with the transgender, the new business item B, policy 5145. Would you like to take it from here?
Sure, sure. Good evening, everyone. In January of 2024, the Connecticut State Department of Education issued an update on guidance for the civil rights protection and supports for transgender or gender diverse students. That document is available on the State Department of Ed website. And we have had a committee at the district reviewing that document. And as a result, recommending changes to our policies so that the district is in compliance with the new regulations from January 2024. So I don't see any changes in the actual policy itself, other than a few legal references. The changes really are in the regulations attached to the policy. And there are some changes in terms of pronouns. So in terms of taking out his and her and replacing it with their, you'll see that in several places. Again, this, this, these regulations are in alignment with CADE. Under gender identity, there is, under the definitions section, there is a statement that was recommended that we add to indicate that everyone has a gender identity. Again, it does indicate that the gender identity can be the same or different from the gender assigned at birth. But we do want people to be aware that everyone does have a gender identity. We also added sexual orientation. That was not in the regulations before. It refers to a person's identity in relation to the gender or genders to which they are romantically, emotionally, or sexually attracted, including any identity that a person may have previously expressed or is perceived by another to hold. That's a lot of information, but we did take that specifically from CADE and their recommendation. On page two of the regulations, under the bullying section, again, we just changed himself or herself to themself. And when we're talking about damage to property, we changed damage to their property. So again, some pronoun changes. And then probably one of the biggest changes is in terms of the records. So at this time, we want to be sure that we're treating changes to official school records for students who identify as a different gender than the one assigned at birth in the same manner that we're treating other record requests, record changes, requests for changes to records.
Denise, can I ask you a quick question with that?
Yeah.
Do you mind? Do they have to change their gender identity legally? Or and then we can change it on our records, or they don't have to change it legally first?
So, so part of the issue with the regulations that we used to have was that it was very unclear what, what records would change and what would initiate a change. Because if you recall, the parents were not as involved as we would have thought that they would have been. The regulations have clarified that, the new regulations. In terms of, we've taken out the whole section at the bottom of page two. Because, you know, we, we're not required to change a student's record based on what we had in the old policy. If you look at page three, where this is the section that, the new section that refers to records. It says, "The district recognizes under FERPA that a student has the right to request the school to change their name and gender on such students' school records. If the student or parent guardian, if the student is under 18 years of age," that's very important, "believe the records are incorrect, misleading, or violate a student's privacy." In general, a school should treat requests to change student records based on transgender status no differently than it would treat any other request for a change to student records. So it's being treated the same way as it would be for any other student record. Upon such a request, schools should correct student education records to accurately reflect the student's chosen name and gender identity, regardless of whether the student has completed a legal name change.
Okay.
So if the student believes that the criteria for changing or amending a student record is if the record is incorrect, misleading, or violates a student's privacy. So if a parent and a student said that the record with name A is incorrect, they could request that we change the record and have the correct name on the record. But the parent, if the student is under 18, would be very involved in that.
And that's, that's a positive change, I think. I think what was happening in the past is students were going to the office to have these changes made or going to their counselor. And the counselor would, would recommend that they have this conversation with parents first. Because they knew, they would tell them that this information will now go on Power School and your parents will know about it, but I think you really need to talk to them first. And it could be a little uncomfortable. And some parents receive information, you know, a little better than others, especially when it comes to this kind of a topic. So I think it is important, though, if children are under 18, that parents are involved.
Yeah.
The law should be clear on that. And I think we need to have the law clear on that.
It makes it much clearer for the school and the parents to understand the process. So they're not required to get a legal name change. And that's what was in the previous policy. If the parent or student set believe that that name is incorrect and we have a form that they would complete and we've amended the form, we're going to review it at the next principal meeting and share it with the principals. If they believe the name is incorrect, there is a form for them to submit. And same with their gender. If they believe the gender is incorrect, they can, they can request that it be changed, the same way they would if there's enough, you know, an error in something else in the student record. So it really brings this change in alignment with any other change to a student record.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and it's much, I think it's much clearer for everyone to follow. I think there was a lot of questions that the state received and they knew they had to really update that guidance that they issued because it was really difficult for school districts to implement it.
I had two questions, Denise, on language on page, this is in the regs. And this again is an administration document, not a board document, but I'll pipe up anyway. Under gender identity, everyone has a gender identity. What about the person who's uncertain about their identity?
Um, I, I believe there are, there are identities that they would choose. If it would be gender fluid, it could be, or gender transition. Well, that's if they're, if they're transitioning to a different gender.
They're pretty clear about what they want at that point.
It could be gender nonconforming. There are several terms that relate to students who don't identify as either male or female.
Okay. And the last thing on gender expression, behave, through behavior, clothing, hairstyles, activities, or mannerisms. I would, I would add the word language. The choice of language that one uses is a gender expression. You don't have to buy that, but I just thought I'd throw that to you.
Okay. And then the rest of the revisions on page, oh, I just want to walk you through the rest of the revisions. They're very minor. On page three, it's really just changing pronouns from his or her to their.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, thank you. I know gender nonconforming is sort of the current term of, of reference in, in, in the dominant culture. However, I just want to, I, I, I find it, I'm, I'm concerned about that overall. Like historically, looking forward, I, I think we may end up changing that because nonconforming subtly asserts that there is a norm that's being diverged from. You know, when, there are a lot of ancient cultures that recognized multiple genders, you know. You know, we happen to develop in a, in a culture that does not recognize more than one, or more than two, I should say. And now that's a thing that we're starting to, to deal with generationally, which, you know, I think is progress and we're in, we're moving in the right direction. But it's just one of those terms that I think, you know, 20, 30 years from now may be seen as archaic. But yeah, other words than that, I, I really don't have anything to, to, to comment on. You know, I, I think the name changes and the gender changes on the record is, it seems within reason. You know, because it does check in with the caregivers as well as, you know, gives, gives a student agency. So I'm, I'm, I'm fine with everything else. And I don't have any suggested name change or suggested a term change for the nonconforming thing because that's, you know, in state law and, you know, since that's a bigger fish to fry. And like I said, that's probably going to be a generational thing. Another 20, 30 years, we'll have to resolve that.
Well, and I mean, I mean, even thinking about 2018 when this was first developed and seeing some of the changes to make it clearer in 2024, you know, you may say it, see it even sooner.
Well, you know, if it happened sooner, I'll be all the, all the more, I'll be happy to see it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, Matthew and Susan, I would recommend that we add as it, and I don't know if it would be an appendix, but the form that we've been working on-
Yep, I would agree.
That, that is shared with, with students and parents if they do want to make a, a change. I think that is really important to be included.
I agree.
Maybe we can, maybe we can send that out to the committee tomorrow so you can take a look at that.
Yep.
That would, wouldn't that be, wouldn't that be part of the regulation and therefore the domain of the superintendent?
I, I could probably share it right now if you, Caitlin, if-
Yeah, let's take a look at it because we can get it all in the package.
Okay. Caitlin, would you allow me to share my screen?
Yes, you're able to.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Just take me a minute to find it. Okay. Just make sure this is it. Okay. All right, can everyone see that?
Yep.
All right. So we have to put our letterhead on it. But what we did is we put the regulations at the top. It's again, it's titled, "Request to Add/Change or Remove a Preferred First Name and/or Gender." And one of the things we, we've been working with Power School because, you know, there's different fields where the names appear. And we wanted parents and students to know that the chosen name and gender will appear in Power School as the preferred name and pronouns. But in systems such as Google Classroom, Schoology, or Power School, in the grading section and the health field, the student's legal name will be visible. As will the permanent record. There are some concerns with privacy. So we want to be sure that students are aware that their legal name will still be visible to teachers when they're entering grades. So that it's not a violation of their privacy to share their legal name if it's different from their chosen name. So we have their current legal name and ID, ID number, and then they select an option. Add the chosen first name slash gender listed as my preferred name in Power School and remove the chosen first, or remove the chosen first name gender listed below from my record. That's missing an M. So sometimes, as you are aware, students, their name, their chosen name changes as they, you know, you know, as they change and as they identify, you know, differently. And then we have a field for their chosen first name, their chosen preferred gender. And then just a sign off for the student and the counselor. And I believe there is a sign off for the parent as well.
With the new legislation there, it'd have to be if they're under 18.
Yeah, yeah, there, there is. I, I'll have to go back to Lauren and make sure that I have the most updated copy. Lauren and Angela have been working on this because it really aligns with what happens in Power School. But the student signs off, the counselor signs off, and the new form does have a sign, a signature for the parent. And we'll get that to you as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Denise.
Yeah, we have several versions we've been working on. So I apologize, this isn't the one with the parent signature.
That's okay, Denise.
Yeah.
Ian.
I'm sorry, um, I, I lost, I lost the feed there for a second. Are we in a vote?
We, we haven't gotten there yet. I wanted to be sure everybody had a chance to speak. Do you have something else you want to share?
Oh, no, with the transgender and gender, not, well, the transgender policy.
Yeah, that's where we are.
No, I'm good, I'm good. I've said what I had to say. And, uh, and yeah, looking forward to moving beyond a binary culture.
And thank you, thank you. I just, Matthew, if, if I may, I found the correct form with the parent signature.
There it is, yep.
Yep.
So we'll get that out, you know, in the package and we'll make that an addendum to the regulation.
As, as a matter of curiosity, how, do we, have we had instances where children at the elementary school level have raised issues about their identity?
We have.
Just a few, but we do have them. Middle school, you see a lot of interest and, and in the high school.
Yeah, one, one child and family that I've been working with an elementary principal on, really, the family approached the principal, this is a young child. I think last year the child was in first grade, so this year the child would be in second grade. And the, the family approached the principal to share that their child ident, you know, was born female but identifies male. And, and, you know, just asked in terms of bathroom accommodations and making him aware of the fact that, you know, their child identifies as male since a very, a very young age. And is very open, very open, very comfortable with that. But at the younger level, really, we're finding there's more communication about the, the choices that come from the parent because the children are younger.
Fascinating. Thank you. Would one of the members be interested in making a motion of some sort?
I make a motion that we recommend policy R, R 5145.53 to the full board.
Can I ask if you would consider making that for P rather than R?
Oh, P, okay.
We can show the both, board, both of them because I think a lot of the changes have come in the regulations. So I think they need to be aware of that, too.
Right. That's why I used this one because that's where the changes were. Okay.
Is there a second?
Well, sure. Um, yes, I, I'd be interested in seconding, but I just want to be, should we do both? The P version and the R version?
If Bev would like to do that, if Bev would like to do that and you'd like to accept that, that's fine with me. Go ahead.
There, there are, there are changes to the legal references in the policy.
Yeah, I see. 5145.53.
Second, Thomas.
Okay, is there any further discussion? A deafening sound. In that case, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of recommending adoption by the full board of policy 5145.53 and R 5145.3, please indicate by saying aye.
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 And the motion is unanimous, three in favor, no objection, no abstentions. And thank you so much, Denise. You're more than welcome to stay.
Thank you.
Good night, Denise.
You'll be seeing me with the, the, we have a quite a lengthy updated title, nine policies for students, staff, and school climate. So you'll be seeing a lot of me coming up. Have a good night, everyone.
Good night. You too, Denise.
Okay, thank you.
Good night, Denise.
We are now moving on to new business, A, discussion of policy P 4115.3, evaluation of coaches. Would somebody like to make a motion so we can discuss it?
I make a motion to adopt P 4115.3, evaluation of coaches.
Second, Thomas.
Thank you. We have a motion made and seconded to recommend adoption of P 4115.3. Discussion. Ian, your hand is up.
I'm sorry, that was an inadvertent tap. Is there someone, could we get some background and explanation on this?
Mark Romano was not able to be here, but this is a brand new policy. Although it's a practice that's been in place in Groton for a long time, all of our staff gets evaluation. We're going to be getting ready to share with the board the new educator evaluation plan that has been crafted by the state, but we've personalized it in Groton. But it's a very important process in evaluating staff. And it's ongoing and coaches all have evaluators. Mark Romano does an amazing job really organizing that. And a lot of the process has to do with some professional learning in coaching that's ongoing and a lot of observation of coaches. And also a self-reflection process so that, just like in it, as in the educator eval, just like what I did with you in the board, where you reflect on your goals and you give evidence to support that you've fulfilled the goals or you're still working on the goals. The same thing is done with coaches and we have a lot of coaches. So I would say that with Mark Romano's style and other leaders, you know,
Hit me last time with my picture.
So with the leaders in the district who are supervising the coaches, like I said, there's a lot of observation, there's a lot of feedback that's given in the moment, and then there's the self-reflection part and then the final evaluation part in written form. But I think a lot of the feedback is verbal throughout the year and through observations in a similar way that we're doing in edu, with our educators, too. Getting in more often, you know, and observing and giving verbal feedback and then written feedback. And then with the self-reflective process mid-year and end year. So, you know, it's a CADE policy, but it's really a, a policy that needed to be put into place, but it's actually been put into place almost as our regulation or the way that we're, we've been doing business with evaluation of coaches.
Susan, down on line number, paragraph number three, right? And it's the second sentence, where the first, and I'll start with the end of the first. Staff members to recognize that the district schools intend to seek and maintain. You see where I'm reading from?
Let's see, one, two, three, the responsibility of all administrators, that, and other professional staff members to recognize that the district schools intend to-
Can we say, can we say rotten public schools instead of the district schools? And make this more personal to us?
Yeah. I think that's a good suggestion. And I think you've heard us say that and you say that as well, that that's what we do seek. What do we give our kids in school to get the, you know, most highly qualified staff to work with them? Including these coaches.
Should athletic director be capitalized or no?
Which, what are you saying should be capitalized?
Athletic director, sentence number one.
I think that would probably be appropriate. Where's, where's Andrea when I need her? But I think that would be-
I saw in another form, they did capitalize athletic director, so.
Yeah, that's fine.
Now, Susan, why do we switch from eval to appraisal? Why don't they call it self-evaluation? Why do they switch? Because the title is evaluation and when they talk about it, they say appraisal.
I don't know. I've never seen that. I, I would rather say self-evaluation. That's what we- I don't know, I've never seen that. I, I would rather say self-evaluation, that's what we call it for the educator eval, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Self-appraisal seems like you're buying a car or something.
Yeah, it doesn't, no, it doesn't drive, does it?
No.
So I'm hearing you correctly that you'd like to delete the word appraisal and substitute the word evaluation?
Yes.
Yeah.
And in the paragraph above, instead of calling it the district schools, we're going to call it rotten public schools. Intends to seek and maintain the best quality staff.
Right, and I just want to say I'm in support of the idea of changing appraisal for evaluation. Um, again, just per consistency, I think Bev articulated that.
Well.
Uh, so we have another appraisal in the next sentence, self and administrative, appraisals include, we want to change that to evaluations as well, Bev?
Yeah, wherever the word appraisal is, change it to evaluation.
Do a search and replace, Susan, it'd be real easy.
Yep.
Okay, I'll recognize myself unless either of you folks wants to talk a little more. Welcome Clint.
Um, I'll just say that, you know, I'm in favor of the policy in general. Uh, because, uh, you know, as, as an educator in the current climate, um, you know, it is a standard practice for educators, instructors, um, so I think it'd be fine to have it for athletic, personnel as well because they perform a similar function just in a different venue.
The last paragraph on that page is pretty important. We've seen instances in, with school personnel and with coaches where, um, if they haven't really fulfilled the professional code of conduct or they've had misconduct, um, insubordination, um, violation of rules, they've been terminated, so, um, that's basically what this last sentence says, the board may terminate, contract of any coach at any time for reasons of moral misconduct, insubordination or violation of the rules of the board. Or because a sport has been canceled by the board, so we no longer have the sport.
Yeah, I, I recognize myself if nobody else has anything to say. Uh, I find that is a, a very good description of the process. But the constitution of the evaluation itself, I don't want to say it's missing, but it seems extraordinarily subjective. So I'm wondering whether, i- if we, if we were looking at evaluation of teachers or evaluation of counselors, would that lay out this process without discussing the evaluation itself? And I'm wondering if we should be either here or in regulations be defining the scope and criteria of evaluation.
I think it would be more in regulations is where you would see it.
Is that your intention, is that your intention to do?
Yes, I'll have to work with Mark on the regulations.
Okay. Uh, Ian, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I was gonna, um, just say, yeah, I think, um, I can agree with your concern, having some kind of specified form or regulation with this where it's articulated clearly like what the expectations are and what sort of evaluation would look like, or what the scoring rubric would be, um, would all be good, but it should all come, you know, through the athletic director who's the supervisor of that department in consultation with our administration, the superintendent or their designate.
Yeah. Agreed.
If, if we, if we pass this tonight, uh, and you come up with the regulations subsequently, would you just run those regulations by us so that we can take?
Absolutely. Yep.
Okay.
And just to clarify real quick, sorry, um, so that would be the R version of this, uh, document number?
That's right.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, any, any further conversation needed or does somebody want to make a motion?
Um, I'm making a motion to, oh, sorry, go ahead, Bev.
No, no, go ahead Ian.
See, I was about to do it, but then I realized.
Let's duke it up.
Right in front of me, I stepped out to take dogs out, so if you have the number, that'd be great.
Um, P four one one five point three.
What, what would you like to do with that number?
Did he say if I had the number, that would be great?
Yeah, I don't have the document right in front of me because I just stepped out of the room, so if you have the number, go ahead and make the motion.
Okay, I recommend that, uh, we send, policy P four one one five point three to the full board of education.
As a man.
Second, Thomas.
As amended.
As amended.
Second, second, Thomas.
I'll also get you the amended version with regulations, how does that sound?
That sounds dandy.
Okay, good.
Any further discussion before we take a vote? Do we need secret ballots? Roll call. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 The vote is three, four, and none against, none abstain. We have moved on the, uh, personnel, evaluation for coaches and that is lovely. We are now moving on to our third, uh, old business discussion of P fifty one thirty one dot eight one, electronic communication devices.
The older version of the Cade policy and Matthew's going to reach out to, um, Jody, who he's been working with at Cade, to see if the drafted new policy is available for us to take a look at. I'm going to check with the Connecticut, um, State Department of Ed because they were also going to be working on some models. And, um, but I did get a report from each of my principals about, or each of our principals about, um, how it's going this year. And, you know, if you'd like, I can start with, um, how it's happening. I would say that, Groton Middle School, Peter Bass was very confident that, um, they've really followed stricter guidelines that are through the handbook. The policy isn't as strict as the handbook regulations. And basically, no cell phones are allowed out at any time during the Groton Middle School. Once they've walked in, you know, they put their phones away, um, preferably in their backpack, but sometimes they're on their person and they're not to take them out really till the end of the day. And pretty much that's happening. Um, of course, it's pretty evident that in all levels, elementary, middle school and high school, if a student pulls out the phone to use at those times that they're not supposed to, then they get a verbal warning at first, but if it happens again, then the phone may be taken and put in the office until the end of the day where the student can go and get it. It happens a third time, three strikes you're out, then the parent has to come and get the phone. So, um, and I know that, um, at all levels, the principals have given the kids the reminder of what is in the handbook and the information on, on the policy and what the expectation is. So Peter reports that there's no change for their expectations from last year and there are no issues with these cell phones at Groton Middle School, knock on wood currently. Um, at Charles Barnum, Seth had been here with us earlier this summer and he said, we have not had any problems so far this year. Um, Catherine Kolnowski, it's going okay at CK. This year we are seeing more students with watches, like the one I have, that work for text and phone calls. Um, and they've let parents know the calling feature needs to be disabled on the watch and all phones need to be turned off, um, in the, and in the student backpack, so, you know, this, I feel like Dick Tracy sometimes if I'm in a meeting and getting a phone call and I'm talking into my, um, so they can, they can be, you know, and they can interrupt. Um, so they've noticed that at CK. Mystic River says no problems so far this year, NEA, no issues other than reminders to stay off them on the bus. I don't know how they monitor that, but I guess they're letting them know. And then at Thames River, we have not had a problem so far this year. As in the past, students keep them turned off and in their backpacks. Now, all of our schools have lockers as well. Interestingly, in the new elementary schools where there's lockers, the kids actually use their lockers, so they put a lot of their backpack in their things in the locker. In the middle school because of the size of it and sometimes their lockers are in their academic wing where they usually are, but sometimes they're further away, so, um, that can be a problem just accessing it. So they tend not to use them, some do, but some don't. Same thing at the high school, the kids are carrying their backpacks all around, all day long. So I wish that they could be more convenient, those lockers. It used to be a thing back in my day, you know, even decorating the locker, so. Anyways, and then as a high school, um, Matt says at Fitch High School, we truly appreciate our students' adherence to our change in protocols and following the stricter guidelines of the handbook. This includes our efforts in getting the phones out of everyone's hands during instructional time and keeping students out of the bathrooms during passing time, that's alleviated a little bit of the drama. They can certainly get in their classroom and once they've checked in with their teacher, they can get a pass to use the last one instead of during that passing time that sometimes makes them late, um, they've kind of closed that off. Our admin team received, um, reviews on the, um, oh, they must have had a welcome back to school video and some of the kids called it corny on the first day, but they were really truly happy, um, with the student response to the change, that kids were kind of accepting of the change, most kids. And in fact, many students have shared that they actually liked these updates. I think we even heard it from a couple of our board reps, Melanie mentioned it last night. Um, and then as a staff, we were working hard to strictly enforce the cell phone policy and they, they have been same thing as the middle school and elementary, if they do, do come out, uh, they do office, you know, they first, um, tell them to put it away and if that doesn't work a second time, then they refer it to, for an office referral for electronic violation. And, um, you know, they've had, um, I think they said up to fifty students out of a class of, or out of a school district of a thousand, you know, kind of testing the limits there in the first couple of weeks. So, um, and they've also had parent conferences and worked with teachers and parents to develop plans for students in need of support with, because I think it is, um, they've gotten so accustomed to having them, it's almost like a lifeline. And kids can really, um, get very nervous if they don't have their phone, some kids. Um, I think some of the articles you sent us, Matthew, talk about social media and, um, the bullying that happens and some of the, um, effects on the mental health related to this. So, um, I think that we have to be cognizant of it. And in talking to Carolyn Wilson, there is some addictiveness to behaviors with these devices, um, that we have to be aware of. So. But that was the report from my principal, from the principals.
Great. Uh, I'd like to share, uh, at our two meetings ago, uh, Susan raised the question as to whether or not the legislature was going to likely act on this issue this year and if so, should we hold off rather than go through this? And I went to myself, oh boy, I better check that out. So I contacted all three of our representatives, uh, spoke to Senator Summers and spoke to, uh, Christine Conley. Uh, both of them told me that, of course, they can't guarantee what the legislature will do, but they have no expectation that there'll be any action this year. And the reason is, is that the legislature gave University of Connecticut a million dollar plus, uh, money for a study. And the, that study report will not be in for another ten to eighteen months, so it's unlikely that we'll see anything from the legislature, so, uh, my instinct is from all of our conversations so far that we're not far away from what we might like, as long as we can get the stakeholders on board as well. So, uh, I, um, it's great that we have it in the handbook, but we need to make the policy handshake with the handbook and the handbook handshake.
That's true. And I think it's going to be interesting to see what get Cade has drafted in the intro and what the State Department is looking at too.
So, uh, you know, I sent out a bunch of stuff before that was posted, a annex of more documents was, uh, I don't know if Erica posted it yet today, but she'll be getting it up. And part of it is this, which Senator Summers sent to me. She's part of a working group on, uh, electronic communication devices in the schools. It's a PowerPoint presentation. Uh, and she, and both she and Representative Conley said, if we felt it would be useful, they'd be glad to come and be a resource for, both of them were very supportive of the concept. I think they'd like to see how the pudding tastes before they buy out, sign on, but they're pretty pleased with the concept. So, do we have any comments at this point? I don't want to run over anybody. Okay, so there are a few more things I, I, in a perfect world, I'd like to do. There are so many different pieces to this that I almost wanted to have a per chart. So, uh, I'm asking us all, I'll ask the four, the four questions, uh, to first, and then we can all read each of them as you want. Do we have enough consensus based on what the high school, elementary and middle school are doing that we're ready to try to shape a rough working concept into a draft? Uh, the purpose of having a draft at this point would be that when we do bring onboard our stakeholders, parents, teachers and students, that it would probably be easier for them to react to something rather than to get into a long conceptual conversation. Uh, can I get some feedback from Bev, Ian and Susan on that? The second question, uh, we've been in touch with Carolyn Wilson. Uh, I forget the name of the former board member who Carolyn mentioned, do you remember that Susan? Who has done surveys?
Yes, um, Archie Swindell. Dr. Archie Swindell.
Uh, Dr. Swindell, uh, so we have a potential, uh, survey designer. We have the possibility of doing it in-house, so we don't have to spend a ton of money. Um, so that's a, that's a second piece that we need to kind of figure out where we're putting in our timeline. The third piece is to identify and then on, and an onboarding timeline for the stakeholder reps, the teachers, the parents and the students. Um, the parents, um, my guess is we're going to find parents in either a booster club or a PTO. The students, I'm, Susan, I'm sure will have her folks figure that out. Maybe one of our board members could represent the high school and Peter could find somebody from the middle school with Susan's help. The teachers, I'd love to boot that over to the GEA and let them choose the two teachers, but you may have some other thoughts about that. I really value your thoughts.
Yeah.
And, and finally, the last item is to shape the, the agenda for the next meeting. If we can cover that. Uh, the only other piece that I thought is we've talked about some of what we'd like for rules, but we have not talked about carve-outs at all. The obvious carve-out is a student on an IEP or five oh four has a specific need to have a cell phone at some time, that's going to trump everything. But we may also have students who have employment situations or who have responsibilities for younger siblings. So, um, I'd like us to at some point consider the potential carve-outs and how we would handle out the carve-outs so that there's, it, it doesn't come to the teacher to have to deal with it, but it, the administration and, and we have figured it out together. I'll shut up.
Come to us speaking another language. I met a young man from Haiti who's being adopted by a family here and, um, we discussed that in his kind of first meeting and I was invited to, um, about how the cell phone uses, a tool that they use in the family to help communicate. He seemed to be so responsive, he's very sharp, wonderful young man. Uh, was really, you could see he was picking up on the language, but that tool could be very useful to him. So already at Fitch High School, we have situations where there are native speakers from other countries, um, who need access to language and that's a viable tool.
I have another tool to share with you later about language, Susan, off topic, but another tool. Ian.
Sorry, I, I just wanted to mention one other, uh, oh, I'm sure there's others, but, um, uh, carve-outs, uh, medical concerns. I know that, uh, there are some people with diet, with diabetes of some sort that have monitors that run through their phones.
Yep.
Um, so that's a thing that we'll have to kind of consider and figure out a way to run that through the administration and the health, uh, you know, the healthcare, um, in the school so that we can get it documented and issue some kind of like pass that they can show the teacher or, or like something that, you know, again, respects all privacy concerns, but also. pass that they can show the teacher or like something that, you know, again, respects all privacy concerns, but also verifies the fact that there is an actual concern that needs to be addressed in that manner.
Right.
And thank you, Ian. Please thank Portia for bringing that to my attention. I've missed that.
I will. Thank you.
Also, did you see in your packet from Erica, the model? I, we actually had the model cave sample, model policy. Um, position statement and policy guidance for personal technology use in Connecticut schools, impact of social media and use of cell phones. Did you get that?
Yes, but that's, that's been superannuated there. Jody told me a week or so ago that they're reworking that in light of the uh state uh, the C S E D guidelines.
Oh, good. All right.
We hope, we have, I hope to have an update. That's what I'm going to call to get the updated one.
Okay, good.
Bev, did you have anything before I turned back to Ian?
Um, not really. Um, my only comment would be if the policies we have now are working. I don't see why we're changing it before the state comes out with their policy. But if you want to move forward with all this. Go ahead, but our policies are working now. I didn't hear Susan say they're not working, so. But if this is something that you have your heart set on, Matthew.
Well, here, here's my, here's, here's my rationale, and I I really do want your feedback. The current guideline says that the supervising teacher grants permission. Now, we have changed our uh
We have changed that.
And all I'm looking for at this point, because it does seem to be working well, is that we make we have congruity between the handbook and the policy. And then when they come out with something new and they tell us to do something differently, chances are we'll listen.
And I think Erica has put together what's in the handbook as a regulation too, to make it consistent. Um, so we've got that additional piece, um, but there is that irregularity of, you know, kind of that, and I think we need to think about the carve out that we've just discussed as well in the policy. There may be exceptions to the rule. Um. Based on medical. You know, uh student who, you know, needs support with language. Maybe special needs. Um. But I think if we can get and take a look at what Jody's talking about with the cave and take a look at that to see if that's more in line with what we're talking about and closer to what we're doing. Then, you know, then we might be able to bring it to the board, but let's um. Let's gather some more information because I think it's really important that our students and our teachers and our parents are understanding of why we're making these changes too.
But that's, that, Ian, you have something? I'll hold off.
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, yeah, I just wanted to say, I think maybe we should just kind of create a quick uh action list and and priority and you know, it seems like low hanging fruit a- as far as like, you know, what Matthew was identifying. Um, you know, to get the handbook to agree with the policy since, you know, currently the way we're operating. There's been no uh significant complaints, you know, no significant number of complaints, I should say, um, and everyone seems to be uh okay with it. Um, you know. It seems like, yeah, just getting the policy and handbook to agree would be one thing we could easily accomplish. And then maybe next up, look at putting carve outs into the current policy and handbook, make sure that it's understood that, you know, if there is a compelling need and that can be documented and 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 verified, then um, you know, we'll, we'll allow some carve outs and some accommodations for that. And then three, I I think you know. Well, I think Bev made a good point and and that's sort of like where I was thinking overall was, you know, if there is larger stuff coming through like through cave and through the state, then maybe we should uh you know, pause there, pause at number two and wait for number three to come through before we any make any other grand revisions.
Thank you. Bev?
No, I agree with Ian. I think we should do step one, step two, and wait before we do anything major focus groups and all that.
Okay, so what I'm, the way I'm processing what I've heard. Please jump on me politely if I'm misunderstanding. Is that we're almost ready to try to come up with a draft document that would reflect what we learned from cave and what Susan learns from the state. Um. Add to that a first pass at carve outs. So the question i- i- if that, if I'm, if I'm not hearing that I'm wrong on that, that I misheard you. Um, once we have that. And I'm not sure how long it will take us to have it. This is now, I would hope we would have it by November. Is November a target date to bring on uh some of these stakeholders? You know, Clint, you haven't said anything either. I'd be grateful for your feedback. You're invited.
Uh, Matthew, thank you. I appreciate it. I've been following along and uh I uh I have no quibbles with uh the board members that spoke and their plan of attack. Um, I think slow and steady as we collect more information would be most prudent.
Okay.
I agree. Yeah.
So. Okay, so here's the question. Who's going to tie the bell on the cat's tail? Uh, I have no problem doing my piece, but I'd rather it be a group effort. Uh, how would you guys? How do you, how do my colleagues recommend that we proceed? In this, uh, we will have hopefully something from C S E D and from uh, cave in a couple of weeks. I hope certainly in time for the next meeting.
Well, um, if I, if I can just jump in real quick. Sorry, I I I guess may, maybe I'm missing something and and please correct me if I'm um, missing misunderstanding, um, but I I believe like, you know, what Bev and I were talking about was first step, let's make sure the handbook and the policy match up. And we can also probably just combine in putting in a couple of simple carve outs that we've already identified just for starters, and that that's something that we could do ourselves without any large group having it to to participate. Um. And just have that as our status quo for a period of time until such time that the state and and cave and C S D E all kind of settle out and produce some document that we can then react react to.
So would, would you and Bev, I understood, would you and Bev uh be interested in working on that text? Would you like my participation?
Doesn't usually the administration does that. They work on the
No, I think, I think Erica and I can um do that.
Yeah, that's what they usually do.
And I'll have Clint look at it and then I'll bring it to you guys.
Yeah, thank you.
That would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Yeah.
That's great.
No problem.
I love it. Less word for mother, particularly when I'm mom. Okay. So, um, how would we like to shape the next meeting's agenda? And then we can be out of here. Gosh, we started at six oh two. Maybe we can be out of here in an hour.
Um, well, I can tell you that probably in about a week or so. I'll have a number of policy referrals uh, ready to go. Um. And when is the next meeting scheduled?
I think it's the eighth of October. I don't, don't hold me to it, but I, that's what I remember seeing.
I would uh see. I would respectfully request possibly maybe shifting it to the fifteenth on account of the ad hoc budget procedure committee meeting on the tenth. And like I said, I'm drafting up some policy referrals uh coming out of that committee. And so that would allow us to meet on the tenth and actually uh vote as a committee to send it to the policy committee for review.
The, I'm looking at September. No wonder if it's been
Uh, okay, yeah, I don't have a calendar in front of me either. I was working off the date that you said.
There is a cow meeting currently scheduled for October fifteenth.
Okay, that's a Monday, so I'm looking at Tuesday.
No, Tuesday is the fifteenth.
The first Tuesday after the tenth is would be my hope to have the policy committee meet then. So that
Fifteen, that's the fifteen.
And I guess maybe that's, that's a tangential procedural question is can the ad hoc budget procedure committee through the chair, send a referral directly to the policy committee?
I don't see why not. I don't know. Or did
Well, there's been some discussion at the board that, there's been some discussion at the board that it either needs to be referred by the chair or by the board as a whole, and some people, some individuals want to discuss, discuss it beforehand to see if there's a willingness of the board to, I I'm fine with it. But I know there are people who've who've said they want to have to see if there's a willingness of the board to even have a topic addressed.
Ian, are these policies related to um some of the work from the ad hoc budget committee, related to budget?
Uh, yeah, precisely.
All right.
Yeah, so I mean, that that's, and but we as a, as a committee were, want to be respectful of the overall process that the board has historically followed. So we did not want to send policy committee referrals directly to the board or to the committee as a whole necessarily for like a first read. We wanted to run them through the normal policy process.
Yeah.
Which would be the policy committee. Yeah, having like a
Yeah.
What would you, what would you think?
Here next week. So Irene's coming next week on Monday.
Right, and and our next uh ad hoc uh budget procedure committee meeting is scheduled for October tenth. Which we're hoping to have uh you and the new business administrator Irene in attendance to kind of like tune up some things and that also could give you all a first look at these uh draft policies as well. And uh, and actually, you know, I'll invite Jay as well. I think, yeah, no, that would be four board members. So yeah, it would be fine. I can invite Jay in to that meeting as well. Just to try to kind of fast track this a little bit.
Ian, you could give Jay a call and ask if he's comfortable with with making the referral to us directly so we can take it up on the
Sure. Yeah, I can reach out to him tonight after, after the meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I I won't speak for him, but if Jay refers it, I'm I'm good with it. I don't need to.
Okay.
I just don't want us, I just don't want this committee to to jump the gun.
Right, right. And I think that, you know, as long as the, if the chair signs off on it as a referral, then that follows historical precedent, you know, and and, you know, past practice of of the board. So I don't think anyone would throw a procedural flag on that. And plus, like, you know, on top of that, we have two runs through the policy committee and two runs through the board. Anyway, as part of that package. So no matter what, everyone's going to get a swing at it.
Sounds like Facebook.
Yeah.
So could, i- is it possible that to your schedules, Bev and Ian, allow you to meet in person on on that meeting? Uh, at central office?
On the tenth, on the fifteenth you're talking?
The eighth. I'm talking about the eighth, the where policy committees.
No, no, uh, I thought we were trying to move after the October tenth.
You want to move the policy committee to October tenth?
No, no, no. The ad hoc funded committee is the tenth.
Policy committee.
Right, and I was hoping to have the policy committee meet on the fifteenth. So that
Be before the C O W.
At five. Day, at five P M. Would you, would Bev and Ian, would you be available at five P M? I can arrange my date.
Oh, boy. Okay, hold on. I gotta get a calendar out. Um, I don't know. Are we trying to?
Well, uh, I'm not
Where's, when's the next policy committee meeting? Why don't we
Getting a little translation.
We're tentatively scheduled for the eighth, Tuesday, the eighth of October. And Ian is asking if we could shift it from the eighth to the fifteenth.
Yeah.
You're correct.
Yes, yes, that is correct.
Wait, huh? Let's not do it before another meeting. Yeah.
No, I don't want to stockpile it either. I'd rather like you know, so there's a, there's a cow meeting on the twenty first, correct?
Um. Yes.
Yeah.
Right, so I, in an ideal world. Um, I'd like to see the sequence of events be like on the tenth, the ad hoc budget committee meets and we vote to move our draft policy referrals forward to the policy committee. On the fifteenth, we meet, we give a first read through some comments and ideally we all you know, vote to put them forward to the cow. That would happen on the twenty first.
Well, Ian, it doesn't, it doesn't go to the cow. It goes to a regular board meeting.
Oh, oh, that's right. Sorry, I thought there's one cow and then the regular.
You're pushing your policies real fast.
No, 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 I'm sorry. That, that, that's why I'm construing of the sequence of events. I for, for a moment, I was thinking we did one cow and then a regular. You're right, though. Thank you for the correction. Um. So, um, so, yeah, the twenty eighth would be the first read by the whole board. And then
When would the policy committee meet? Because the fifteenth, you said you didn't want it before the C O W on the fifteenth or before the C O W on the twenty first.
Oh, wait, there's a C O W on, oh, that's right, because the the holiday.
Yeah.
Right, right.
That's all right.
Oh, boy.
I mean, if you
What about the sixteenth?
Well, I'd be fine with the sixteenth.
What about the sixteenth?
I'm fine with the sixteen.
Let me just see that I'm not going to some other meeting. I'm always at a meeting.
Lucky you, Susan.
I know, really.
Sixteenth or the seventeenth would work for me too.
Hold on.
The seventeenth I'm committed.
Yeah, the seventeenth I can't do, but the sixteenth I can.
You can do the sixteenth.
Okay, so we're going to uh, would you ask um Erica to cancel the meeting on the eighth and reschedule it for the sixteenth, six P M, guys?
Mm hmm. And I'm not saying I'll be there in person, so I'll need a Zoom link.
Yeah, yeah, honestly, like at six o'clock, meetings are really tough for me to make um, in person.
And I would have gone home if I knew you guys weren't going to be in person. I thought you guys were all showing up. I would have been home, but I'm going to go home and I'm not far from home, so.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. That's all right. I just got to catch up on my beauty sleep after last night.
Oh, hopefully.
Beautiful anyway, Susan.
Oh. My grandmother used to say beauty is as beauty does.
Right.
Like a box of chocolates, right?
Yeah.
Okay, well, is there anything more that we want to cover this evening?
No, I think
Clint, you came to listen. Do you have anything you want to share or contribute?
I think that was directed at me, Matthew. That was, there was some cross talk, but no, I'm, I'm uh, I think full, uh, and we will continue to march down this road to get it right.
I did mention last night at the meeting, I'm not sure you heard it. After we had chatted, we, I mentioned at one point that we were probably not going to get to A I as a policy this year with all the time we've lost over our financial stress. But I spoke to Susan and I spoke to the board and I said that we had chatted and that I was hopeful that maybe we could do something for professional development for the staff to try to bring people up to speed about some of the advantages and pitfalls of A I so that people are getting on the same page to think about it.
So I have been working with the new assistant superintendent and none of this is official yet, but we are we are tentatively planned to have a smaller working group that we've been connecting with over the last year or so uh, on the next T L I day, which the goal of that meeting would be to see if we cannot build a small workshop for the first official professional development day. Again, this is all in theory, right now, we're working through that, but that is the hope as a next step.
I'm thrilled. Thank you.
Um, yeah, along those lines, I definitely just want to voice support for um, getting something going on that as well as soon, as soon as we can reasonably get it into, into the process, because uh there are some significant concerns with that on a number level. Um. You know, but I'm, I'm looking at it more as a you know, from a teacher's point of view. Uh, big problems, man. Big problems.
And I, I, if I could just add, sorry, Ian, I don't mean to cut you off, but if I could just add my, my two cents here. Because of the, the changing nature of this environment, it is, it is a, it is a daily task just to keep up with it, which I like and enjoy. Uh, but to somehow wrap our heads around a policy that would be meaningful, enforceable or what have you, at this point, I think is a, a difficult task, to say the least. And I don't know what the, the value is immediately. There could be some out there. I know there are a lot of different groups that are commenting on it. But my hesitation is the speed with which this is coming at all of us, educators, administrators, the general public, users, et cetera.
Well. From my point of view, um, it might be a relatively simple approach and and obviously at that, but uh, you know, I said, I don't want to risk, uh, you know, discussing an agenda item that's not on the schedule. you know, I said, I don't want to risk, you know, discussing an agenda item that's not on the schedule, but
I would welcome the conversation anytime, Ian.
Yeah, yeah.
I think my hope in, in, in asking for the referral to the policy committee is that we would be able to start the discussion and come up with some plan for training for our staff, even if we don't implement anything immediately. Just people begin to get on the same page together and talk about it.
I think the board needs a workshop also. And that's what I brought up last night about the board having a workshop on AI that Eastline, their Board of Education had a workshop. Because we need to know about it also. Not only the teachers and the staff, the board needs to know about that. And I bet you most board members don't know about that. And that's why I talked about Eastline had somebody come and give them a workshop. I mean, Clint can come too. But we should really be thinking about that, what's good, what the board needs.
Right, and to build on that, I would say also like Clint, as you're developing this working group to kind of you know, research all this or like, I mean, it sounds like you're already kind of on it. And that's already kind of happening organically. I would definitely encourage the thought of having a board member, at least one as part of that or involved as the liaison or ex officio or in some capacity so that, you know, someone from the board can kind of keep the finger on the pulse day to day.
If memory serves, we, a board member Ackerman did attend one of our larger group sessions, which was early days and it was very much informational and so forth. This is not a working group, really making any decisions. It's really how do we wrap our arms around this and handle it and, and really help educate each other.
Right, yeah, and to that end, I guess definitely I would just encourage like some level of board engagement on that, on a regular basis as part of the group. As well as like apprising the whole group, the whole board from time to time.
Susan, last, last year's cave, they had the gentleman from MIT come and do a presentation on AI that I thought was phenomenal. Do we know if cave records that? Could we see if we could get access to that tape so we could?
So if you're going to do cave and call Jody, would you ask in that and I'll do CSED?
Yeah, because if we had to have that up for the, at least the board members and you decide what you want to do with the teachers. If they listen to that one hour presentation, they would have, it would be an intro. It would be a nice intro. And then we tell them it's already out of date.
Susan, can you contact the superintendent from Eastline and ask them who the board had to give a workshop on AI? Because that would be more interactive than listening to something and you can't ask questions, no feedback, so. I'd rather do it.
I'll call Jeff.
Great idea, Bev. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Ian, how many policies do you think you're going to have on this 16th?
Probably about four, but they're going to be relatively short, I think, like, you know, three paragraphs or fewer. It shouldn't be too heavy, I don't think. And a lot of them, we've already, like honestly, like we've already been kind of circling around them, a lot of conversations we've had over the past many months, you know, as a, as a COW. And also as a, as a regular board during communications, you know, we, we, all members have kind of touched on aspects of these things.
You might want to pass them over to Erica and she can see if there's anything aligned through cave as well. So that she can do a little homework for us.
Like I said, about a week or so, I should have like the rough drafts completed.
Okay.
Right now, they're just conceptual.
All right.
But I've been going through the policies and matching up codes and looking at where we dovetail in with like a point one or a point two add-on. Something like that.
Susan, at the next meeting, can we do a review of the homeschooling policy? Would that be too much?
No, that's fine.
Okay. All right, well, if Andrea was here, I would ask if she had a motion to make, but since she's not here, does anybody have a motion to make?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
This is non-debatable. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.